Good afternoon, everybody. It is Wednesday, November 29th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selectmen. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our YouTube page. Also, since we have, this meeting will be available on Zoom. I am required to read the Governor's Order related to meetings that take place over Zoom, so bear with me here. This meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at the meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Free Town Board Selectmen will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found at the Town of Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering in the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay. So first, agenda item today, we actually have a public hearing. So now there's another thing I need to read. And so this is the, I'm going to read the public notice and open the hearing. So the Free Town Board Selectmen, in conjunction with the Board, sorry, actually, let me start over. "November 21st, 2023, Public Notice, Town of Free Town. The Free Town Board Selectmen, in conjunction with the Board of Assessors, will conduct a public hearing relative to selection of a residential factor that will determine the percentage of tax burden to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2024. This hearing will be conducted at the Police Station Community Room, 15 Memorial Drive, East Free Town, Mass. 02717, on Wednesday, November 29th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting will also be available virtually. Meeting information will be listed. Meeting information for further agenda information will be posted on or before the close of business on November 27th, 2023." So with that, so public meeting is now open. I'm going to continue the public meeting, sorry. Yeah.
I don't know how you didn't find out. I found out yesterday that it was changed to December 4th.
It is, so I'm going to continue it right now.
All right, okay.
I have to open it and then I have to continue it.
Because I'm in a panic here.
No, you're good. All right, so with that, we have to continue this meeting. So I'm going to entertain a motion that we continue this hearing to Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Police Station Community Room.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're good there, right?
Luann roll call.
Oh, sorry, good one.
Good catch.
Selectmen Loaks?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Okay, so agenda item two, we have a presentation and public input on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Please take it away.
Thank you. So hello, my name's Craig Pereira. I'm senior planner with the Horsie Witten Group and I'm the project manager working with the town and Victoria on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Tonight is our first public workshop, one of two. So the town does not have a hazard mitigation plan in place currently, so this is going to be a new plan for the town. Development of this plan, completion of it and adoption of the plan will enable the town to be eligible for federal funding should there be a federally declared disaster over the next five years, which is the planning horizon for a hazard mitigation plan. So hopefully folks can realize the importance of that. It really comes down to funding and additional opportunities. If folks have questions as I go through my presentation, please feel free to just ask a question. So this is your Free Town Local Hazard Mitigation Committee. Typically, folks, department heads or department chairs of their respective departments, myself and then my colleague Kelly King, who's not here tonight. So and that committee meets four times. We've already had two meetings, so we're, and this is our first public workshop, so we're about 50% halfway through the process at this point. So why hazard mitigation planning? In addition to the point that I just mentioned about funding opportunities, the Disaster Mitigation Act requires that all communities have an approved hazard mitigation plan in place in order to be eligible to apply for funding. Hazard mitigation is defined as a reduction or elimination of long-term risk to life, property and the environment. And natural hazard is defined as any event or physical condition that has the potential to cause fatalities, injuries, property damage, infrastructure damage and agricultural loss, damage to the environment, interruption of business and other types of harm and/or loss. So since we started this a while back, maybe mid-year this year, there's new guidance that's out by FEMA that came out last year in April of 2022, but for one year and then became actually policy this past April of 2023. So it sets new regulations that we have to follow in order to have the hazard mitigation plan approved by not only MEMA but by FEMA. And with that, we also have some additional state requirements as well. There's the Resilient Mass Plan that just came out in September of 2023. So even though we started before that, we are required by the regulations to adhere to that state plan. So we've gone back, myself and my colleague have gone back and updated the introductory section of the Hazard Mitigation Plan so that we are consistent with that new state plan. And that state plan also has two additional items, the 2022 Massachusetts Climate Change Assessment. So there's actually three versions of this. There's the assessment, there's the statewide report, and then there's the regional report. So the Resilient Mass Plan 2023 is the five-year update of the state's hazard mitigation plan. It also has a climate adaptation plan. The new regulations that I mentioned that became effective in April of 2023 require communities to factor in and evaluate and assess climate change and the impacts of climate change on the community. It also requires that we have to review all the hazards that are impacted that the state looks at. So one of the things that's new to our committee that we'll be looking at at the next committee meeting, one of the newest hazards that we will be evaluating and adding to the risk profile is changes in groundwater. So it's the only one that's new and it's the only one that we weren't looking at initially. So the new state, 2023 Massachusetts Plan, considers the exposure and vulnerability of state assets, populations, lifelines, critical facilities, economics and natural resources across five separate sectors: the human, governance, infrastructure, natural environment and economy sector. And then that statewide report also includes an analysis of the most significant impacts that climate change poses to the states across those five sectors that I just mentioned against three different factors. Magnitude of consequence, so how large of a climate effect is there or is expected? The disproportionality of exposure, will populations and environmental justice areas be disproportionately affected? And the need for effective adaptation? Is there enough currently being done to adapt to the impacts that are projected for the community? And then finally, volume three is the regional report. And the regional report, Free Town falls within the Cape Islands and South Coast region. Some of the climate stretches that are particularly vulnerable to the Town of Free Town include sea level rise, storm surge, increasing temperatures and more extreme precipitation. And those are generally to the Cape Islands and South Coast region, so we need to factor those into our analysis. And then again, these are the two or three highest priorities that are impacting the region that the Town of Free Town falls in. For the human sector, it's increase in vector-borne diseases, incidence and bacterial infections. So because the temperatures are expected to continue to rise, it creates the perfect environment for increased tick and mosquito infestations as well as then impacts from them. And then health and cognitive effects from extreme heat, health effects of extreme storms and power outages, emergency service response delays, evacuation disruptions, reduction in food safety and security and damage to cultural areas. Under the infrastructure sector, we can expect damage to electrical transmission and distribution infrastructure as well as reduction in clean water supply. Natural environment sector, marine water ecosystem degradation, coastal wetland degradation and coastal erosion. For governance, increase in demand for state and municipal government services, reduction in state and municipal revenues. And then finally, the economy sector, reduction in the availability of affordable-priced housing and then a decrease in marine fisheries and aquaculture productivity. So those are just some of the items that are impacting the region in general that we need to consider for the Town of Free Town. The table at the bottom is sort of a snapshot of those climate change impacts. So 2030 in the near term, summer temperatures could increase by 3.6% from 1950 to 2013, increasing tick activity and the risks of Lyme disease. 2050 or mid-century, an increase in sea surface temperatures, reducing marine fish catch and increasing risk from harmful bacterial infections. 2070, mid-late century, historical 10% annual chance daily rainfall. So 2.4 to 4 inches could occur five times more frequently than currently. And then I think we've all sort of seen that over the last six months that we've all experienced. 2090, end of century, tropical cyclone frequency could increase by nearly 50%, leading to damage from storm surge, heavy rainfall and high winds. So the mitigation process, there's four different pieces. There's assessing risks, establishing goals, identifying projects and actions and updating and maintaining the plan. As I mentioned, we are about 50% of the way through. Our next step is to start to establish some of the goals. Typically, when we're doing a hazard mitigation plan update, we would revisit the existing goals. Since this is the first plan for the community, we will be developing those goals. Assessing the risks, so as I mentioned earlier, we are required to evaluate all of the hazards that the state plan evaluates. If they are not significant in frequency or severity, then we don't necessarily have to consider those hazards, but we need to call those out specifically in the plan. So the hazards that we are going to be looking at and profiling include flood-related hazards, so riverine, flash flooding, inland, urban flooding and heavy rain, dam failures, coastal flood hazards. For winter-related hazards, we'll be evaluating blizzards, snow and nor'easters, ice storms and extreme cold. For wind-related hazards, we'll be looking at hurricanes and tropical storms, storm surge, tornadoes and high winds, although tornadoes are not a significant impact in the community, lightning and thunderstorms and hail. We'll also be looking at geologic-related hazards, earthquakes, extreme heat-related hazards, drought-related hazards, brush fire and wildfire-related hazards, invasive species-related hazards. And for invasive species, Horsie Witten typically includes invasive species. That's actually a new item that the state plan is now looking at after evaluating other existing plans. So we're right in line with that and we'll be looking at aquatic plant species for invasive species. And then again, changes in groundwater-related hazards. Climate change, we are now required to incorporate climate change impacts into a hazard mitigation plan. So what we have proposed to do with the committee was, is to have a climate change impacts on section for each of the hazards that we are evaluating and profiling. Climate change has a whole range of impacts depending upon the type of hazard that it is. So rather than have just one section on climate change, we're integrating climate change throughout the plan. So as I mentioned, we, at our first committee meeting, we met to evaluate these hazards that are being included into the plan and we had to develop a hazard index. So we utilized, and I'll show you the composite and a couple of slides, but what we did was, before we even met with the committee, NOAA has a severe events database.
And the effect of his wife. That includes. Was having. That did that, showing everything I needed to know. Specifically, that he was not crazy.
And we have. And the impacts. You know, how many? Rain. And the serial killer from the state of prison. I wasn't saying this, haunting them, right? Hurricane. Were there power shortages because there were trees and lines and things like that? So some of the items you'll see, we were able to evaluate and score based on that. The rest of the hazards, we, as a committee, we determine.
It should be two victims to make sure I'm seeing what I'm seeing and not going crazy.
Rain, flash flooding is a hazard. Wind. Storms are low. Coastal flood hazards are moderate. Winter-related hazards. Storms are low. Extreme cold is moderate. Wind-related hazards, hurricanes, tropical storms are high. Storm surge is moderate. Again, tornadoes are not a significant impact to the community, but high winds are and they're a high hazard. Lightning and thunderstorms are low and hail is also a low hazard. Earthquakes are low, extreme heat is moderate, drought is moderate, brush fires, wildfires are moderate. Invasive species-related hazards are moderate. And then again, changes in groundwater-related hazards, we have a to-be-determined here because that sort of happened at the end of September. We haven't met as a committee since, so we need to score that and rank that next time we get together. So this is the hazard index composite, like I showed, like I mentioned. All the different categories are in the first column, flood-related, wind-related, winter-related, et cetera. The first column is a frequency, so it's either very low, low, medium or high. The middle column is location, so does it affect the entire community? Does it affect just portions of the community? And then severity, so you know, that's either minor, serious, extensive or catastrophic. And that's based on the number of injuries or deaths that have resulted. It also results on whether or not there are transportation disruptions, whether infrastructure was, were disrupted or impacted. And then finally, the hazard index is on the last column on the right and that's the actual overall number from one to zero. So you can see for anything that's a seven or above is considered a high hazard. So again, inland, urban flooding, heavy rain, hurricanes, high winds. And then there's a whole host that are six, five and six, which are moderate. And then anything with a one on the left-hand side was scored by or ranked by the Local Hazard Mitigation Committee. Anything without a number next to it under the hazards column came from that NOAA severe events database. So assessing risks, we're also looking at developing a risk and vulnerability assessment. So we're going to be looking at community assets, economic assets such as businesses and large employers, historic assets, looking at social assets, vulnerable populations and cultural locations, natural resources, looking at lifeline and utility systems, wetlands, conservation and recreation sites. And then also looking at essential buildings, critical facilities, including municipal buildings, hazardous facilities, roadways and bridges. And part of that vulnerability assessment is doing, developing some GIS data sets that we are currently, that's sort of where we're at in this process, where we're identifying all the critical facilities, municipal buildings, police and fire stations, et cetera, but also looking at vulnerable populations. And we're conducting a series of overlay analyses with those. So this is our first overlay analysis. This is the FEMA flood zone map. And I also have 24 by 36 maps over on the other side of the room there, which I will leave for folks. Victoria will take care of those for us. If you have an opportunity to take a look at the maps, there's the FEMA flood zone map, there's the sea lake and overland surge from hurricanes or the slosh zones. And then there's also the MCFRM, which is the Massachusetts Flood Risk Model. That's a recent flood risk model projections that were developed by the Woodhull Group. And that's the, that's the current data set that everybody's using right now. So as part of that FEMA flood zone analysis, what we did was we took the parcels data layer and we took these different hazard scenarios and overlaid them on each other to develop the number of buildings by type that are impacted by the specific hazards. And then we also brought in the assessor's information regarding the assessed value of the land building and total value. So in doing that, for FEMA A Zone or the 100-year flood zone, which is shown in blue on the map, there's just over 1,000 parcels that are impacted by the FEMA flood zone, FEMA A flood zone and just over $690 million worth of assets impacted. For the FEMA X Zone or the 500-year zone, which is the orange color on the map, there are 187 parcels impacted and just over 81 million in assets impacted. For the MCFRM, there are three different scenarios. So that's the Massachusetts Flood Risk Model. And these come in through the, impacting the community through the Taunton River. You can see the 2030 scenario, which is the yellow color on the map. There's 317 parcels that are impacted, just over $292 million. The MCFRM 2050 scenario, which is the orange color, which you can't really see at this scale, but you can see on the map, the physical map, that's on the other side of the room. There are six parcels at just over 2.5 million. And then there's the MCFRM 2070 scenario in red on the map, which comes in at 18 parcels or just over $7 million of assets impacted. And then finally, we have the sea lake and overland surge from hurricanes overlay analysis. So there's four different categories of hurricanes. So the category one, which is the yellow color on the map, just over, just about 204 parcels or $163 million in assets. Category two, which is the kind of pinkish color, 102 parcels or $43 million in assets. Category three is the orange color on the map, 72 parcels, just over $111 million. And then category four, which is the red color on the map, 33 parcels with just over $14 million impacted for assets.
Quick question. So is that like the different categories, what do they really represent? Is that like their likelihood?
Wind speed.
Wind speed?
Yes, yes. So typically, when, you know, when a hurricane is approaching, there's a category assigned to it and the wind speed is assigned to it. Typically, when it hits land, when it comes off the water and hits land, it naturally slows down, dependent upon the conditions and dependent upon what's happening before and what's following behind it. That wind speed or that category might go up or down and be adjusted.
All right, so it's literally like a hurricane category.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the next step in the process is to establish goals. And as I mentioned, we are, that's what we will be doing at our next committee meeting, committee meeting number three. So we will develop, because the town does not have a plan in place right now, there's nothing to update, so we will be creating the goals and the mission statement for this plan. Something similar to reduce the loss of life, property, infrastructure and cultural resources throughout the community from natural disasters through a multiple hazard mitigation program that involves increased coordination, planning, education and capital improvements. We will also be looking at developing overarching goals to support the mission statement. So these goals are, will be, are intended to be overarching and broad in nature. The specifics about the community really come down to the final section that we'll develop at the end of our process, which is the hazard mitigation strategy. So the next step is to identify projects and actions. So all of the work that we've done so far is starting to inform developing and identifying these projects and actions. So the NOAA severe events database and the hazard index that I spoke about previously. Another thing that I spoke, that I didn't speak about, but that we've already completed is the capability assessment section. So we've done a review of all of your plans, studies and reports, the town's website and the town's capabilities so that we can identify what the town already has in place, what your capabilities are moving forward. And then anything that is applicable to hazard mitigation or natural hazards, we've taken those, and you'll see how this comes into play in a couple of slides, but we've taken all of those actions and we'll bring those in and those are the ones that are going to start to populate our mitigation strategy. The more that we can show that the town has gone through the process of vetting mitigation actions across multiple platforms, across multiple demographics, and that there's consistency across the municipal documents, the more strength that your application will have if and when you do go after federal funding. So if you can show, you know, it's part of your open space plan, it's part of your zoning regulations, it's part of your subdivision regulations, it's part of your hazard mitigation plan, your MVP plan, you'll have a stronger argument when you do go after funding. So mitigation projects are going to be categorized under mitigation measures. So there's planning and prevention, property protection, natural resource protection, structural projects, emergency services and public education and awareness. We do this because we, we want the town to be able to utilize the hazard mitigation plan as a useful document. We want to make it as streamlined and efficient as possible. We want people to be able to just go to the topic that they want to go to. And categorizing these and these, under these six also falls in line with the state hazard mitigation plan as well. So each mitigation action, as I mentioned, it's based on a review of existing plans, studies and reports. So everything that the town already has in place today, as the town's identified risks and vulnerabilities, so all those hazards, the risk profiles that we've done, those overlay analyses where we show the intersection of critical facilities and vulnerable populations with hazard scenarios, public input from tonight and other meetings, and then municipal coordination with the committee. Each mitigation action will have a consistent approach. There will be a brief description of the intended action. We'll identify who the responsible party is, who the supporting party or department should be, what the proposed timeframe for completion will be and then what the, some of the potential funding mechanisms. So it's not necessarily always FEMA funding. It could be CPA funding, it could be municipal funding, it could be MVP funding through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And then once we have all of our mitigation actions, at our final Local Hazard Mitigation Committee meeting, we need to do a, what FEMA is the stapling method, but it's an abbreviated cost benefit analysis. So for each action, we need to take the costs and the benefits and evaluate those down across these seven different topics. So social, technical, administrative, political, legal, economic and environmental. This is a requirement of MEMA and FEMA that we go through this process. And then finally, our last piece of the mitigation process is implementation, update and maintenance of the plan. So we will identify what the town's capability to implement this plan is. Once the plan goes to MEMA for review and approval, they will forward it, if they're barring any necessary or required revisions, they will forward it to FEMA. And then get a letter back, Victoria will get a letter back from FEMA saying that the plan's been reviewed and approved pending adoption. And from that point forward, the town has one year to officially adopt the plan through resolution. If the town does not adopt the plan through resolution within that first year, the whole process starts over again and we have to start from scratch as far as evaluating all the hazards, going through the NOAA severe events database, having all the meetings, having all the workshops again. We'll identify the annual review process in that section. And the plan technically should be updated after a major disaster happens or within five years, which is the planning horizon. So once the plan gets submitted to MEMA, gets submitted to FEMA, gets approved by FEMA, gets adopted by the community, by the Board of Selectmen, the plan will be active for five years. So from that point forward, the town will be eligible to apply for federal funding within that five-year window. The recommendation in this plan would also be that the town start looking at updating the plan before the plan expires because once you're out of compliance, you're no longer eligible to apply for federal funds. So the MVP of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, Community Resilience Building Workshop is a program that the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has been running for several years now. The state of Massachusetts is very progressive in regards to natural hazards and also in regards to climate change impacts. The town went through the MVP process in 2019 and has become a MVP-certified community. So this is one of those pieces that I mentioned earlier about the capability assessment. So this is one of those pieces that I mentioned earlier about the capability assessment section. The town's already done an MVP plan and has that in place and is MVP-certified. The MVP plan and process should be looked at as an abbreviated sort of one-day hazard mitigation plan process. MVP process is by stakeholder invite only. So when the town did their MVP process in 2019, they identified who should be at that one-day workshop. The hazard mitigation plan process or HMP process is a general public process. So everybody's encouraged and welcome to provide feedback and input. So these are the top emergent themes that came out of the town's MVP process in 2019. This is one of the first things that we are going to bring forward into the hazard mitigation plan. And these will all become hazard mitigation actions. The way that this lays out is that now there's going to be, once this plan gets approved and adopted, there will be two different funding mechanisms that the town can lean on. There will be MVP funds. So the state of Massachusetts, through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, provides funding mechanisms. I think it's maybe like twice a year. It's definitely on an annual basis and depending on the amount of money that remains, they do a second ask. So all of these actions that are included in your MVP plan, the town can be applying for MVP funds to implement them and have them come to fruition. Bringing them into the hazard mitigation plan process now provides a second funding mechanism. So you'll be able to, once this plan is adopted, you'll be able to evaluate whether you want to go for MVP funding for it or HMP funding for it. I will say that the MVP funding is definitely a little bit more flexible than FEMA fund, HMP funding or FEMA funding. And they also, the state also provides technical assistance to communities to develop those applications. It is sort of a painful, long process to develop these applications. So the top emergent themes from your MVP plan that'll come forward into the HMP plan include long pond and Assawamset Pond Complex stewardship. So flooding resilience and septic system management. Reviewing existing management plans for the Assawamset Pond and conduct a study of flooding impacts on water quality while including engagement with neighboring towns. Consider milfoil management, which is an invasive species, aquatic plant invasive species, and partner with Lakeville for improved regulation, education, and monitoring, and explore grant and loan funding for septic system maintenance. The next is townwide communications, emergency communication practices. Examine and update the town's radio system while also considering an upgrade to the repeater system. In partnership with local and regional stakeholders and advocates, develop materials and presentations appropriate for all ages regarding natural hazards and emergency preparedness measures, and public emergency evacuation routes and plans on the town's website, so posting those. The next theme is senior housing and resource improvements. Council on Aging Infrastructure and Senior Mixed-Use Housing Development. So this is one of those areas that speaks to the vulnerable populations in the community that I mentioned earlier. Consider building improvements such as developing a larger facility, adding showers, and improving electrical infrastructure. Ensure that 55-plus housing is prioritized in zoning regulations, addressing resilience issues. Consider repurposing the police station for social and medical daycare and emergency animal shelter. Continue working with the Kushner and the mass development to solve remaining issues on the property located on Route 18 and ensure this mixed-use senior housing development comes to fruition. Finally, we have a community survey that is now open and available online. You can either follow this link or you can scan the QR code. This information is also on the project webpage on the town's website, under the planning board page. We will also be posting this presentation there. And once we have a draft plan ready for public review and comment, we will also be posting the, on that webpage as well. So our plan is to have a draft update available for public comment by early 2024. A draft plan to MEMA by mid-March 2024, that might slide a little bit, a little bit back. But we do have plenty of time. But we want to make sure that we have this draft plan available. We want to make sure, once the plan becomes ready for public comment, the committee will then first have that first look at it. And then you all will have that second look at it as well. We will send it out to existing boards and commissions. There's a whole process that we have to follow and document as far as public notice on the availability to comment. We'll have to send it also to adjacent communities and give them the opportunity to provide feedback on that as well. And then during that public comment period, which is typically two to four weeks, we'll have another public workshop similar to this one where we'll talk about all the mitigation actions that are included in the plan and then take feedback and input from folks that come out for that meeting. As I mentioned, that plan will also be posted on the project webpage with my information. And you, you know, folks can provide comments directly to me via email or they can give me a call as well. This is Victoria's information. This is my information. Again, this is also on the project webpage as well, so folks know how and where to get in touch with us. I do encourage folks to take a look at the maps after I leave. And you can certainly write right on the maps. Victoria's going to take care of those. She's going to scan the comments if there are any. This is always a really good opportunity for us to get information that is not necessarily formalized but local knowledge. So let us know if there's flooding in your neighborhood or on your street or on your route to work or on your route out of town. That might not be part of the FEMA flood zone mapping, but it's an issue. Or just, you can literally draw right on the map, you can do a call outline, and you can tell me what the issue is. And we'll incorporate all that information and all that feedback into the plan's development as well. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So what, you mentioned like the potentially getting federal funds, you know, for capital improvements. So any kind of examples, maybe examples that might be applicable to a town like Free Town?
So it could be anything from roadway improvements, culvert enlargements. You know, a lot of times localized flooding that's not necessarily on the FEMA flood zone maps is because of an undersized culvert, undersized pipe. We can identify those issues as long as the act, the issue is identified in your plan and it's in your mitigation strategy as a problem or a vulnerability, the town will be eligible to apply for funding to mitigate that problem.
So like hypothetically, if we had a, you know, town building that could be blown over by a strong wind, is that something that, you know, we could apply for federal funds for?
Yes, as long as, as long as it was identified as a vulnerability and it's in your plan, then yes.
Okay.
So one of your mitigation actions, one of your MVP actions spoke to improvements at the Council on Aging. That is something, you know, it's improvements to that, whether it's a sheltering issue or whether it's a warming center or a cooling center. That will all be, as long as it's identified as in the risk profile and then followed up with an action to mitigate or to address that vulnerability, then the town will be eligible to apply for it.
And as someone like yourself who's obviously done this before, do you see certain things that they tend to go after first? That we could say, all right, you know, we have these five issues and we want to apply for some funding. You know, Victoria and Debbie only have so much time on their hands and I don't want to see them waste time. Waste time is a bad term to use, but, you know, I want to see them be able to focus their efforts on on what will gain them most reward. So is there stuff that you see that they tend to fund first or more frequently?
An application typically comes down to the cost benefit analysis. And it has to be, when you go through the cost benefit analysis for a FEMA application for federal funding is very much more involved than the abbreviated cost benefit analysis that we're going to be going through our process. And you have to have a cost benefit analysis of a 1.0 or greater. So you have to follow through the application process, identify what the problem is. You'll have to reference the hazard mitigation plan, you'll have to reference the risk profile where we talk about that, the vulnerability assessment where we mention what the problem is, the mapping, and then the mitigation strategy. And you'll end up develop, as you go through that online application, it'll automatically calculate a CBA or VCA for you. And it has to be a 1.0 in order for it to be competitive. So if you know, as we go through this process and we have our mitigation strategy developed and there are some longstanding issues in town, start documenting that now. The FEMA application process for federal funding is started by a paper trial. So start documenting impacts, start taking pictures, getting, if it's a flooding issue and there were homeowners that were affected, start gathering information from those homeowners as far as what the damages to their properties are so that you can continue to build that process and build that case. A lot of times what happens is that communities put together their hazard mitigation plan, they don't necessarily have the time or the resources, the capacity to do all the things that I just mentioned. Then there's a funding opportunity in front of them. And then they don't have the capacity to pull together an application because it is a timely, time-consuming but also timely process. So I would definitely recommend start, if you have issues that you know about now that you definitely want to pursue, once the plan's approved and in compliance, start doing that now so that you're building an application as you go along. Don't wait for a funding opportunity to happen. But there really aren't, you know, they, sometimes stuff like the MVP program could be something that's more of like a demonstration project. So doing like, you know, if there is a flooding issue somewhere, you could incorporate some green infrastructure, best management practices. That's something that MVP program would most likely fund over an HMP or a federal program would fund. I also recommend just going to FEMA's website and looking at the types of projects that get funded versus going to the MVP website to see what types of projects are funded. MVP right now has two different programs going on. There's MVP or Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness 1.0, which is the process that the town already went through. So you, the town got a planning grant to become an MVP-certified community and identify all those priority actions. Now, and FEMA, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, once you become an MVP-certified community, there are action grants after the planning grant process. So the town is currently eligible to apply for action grants to implement some of those actions that I went over earlier. So you should definitely take advantage of that. But the second part of the MVP program now is MVP 2.0, which looks at incorporating social resilience and social determinants in a community as they apply to the actions that you've already identified in MVP 1.0. So I highly recommend, right now, the state is in the process of the MVP 2.0 first round. So it's kind of a learning curve right now. So a lot, not a lot, but some communities are going through the MVP 2.0 process, which is a very different process than the MVP 1.0 process. But I'm assuming that as with the 1.0 process, there will be several years of funding for a community to go through that 2.0 process and then action grants associated with that as well. So you have that at your fingertips now. So I would definitely start looking at some low-hanging fruit that you can pursue funding for to implement some of those actions now. And you can also partner with other communities for MVP and HMP if you want to do resource sharing as well as vulnerabilities or hazards that impact both communities as well. So that's another way to get at that 1.0 BCA that you're striving for.
Question. So you mentioned that, you know, we don't have this plan in place yet, right? How common is that among, you know, towns in Massachusetts?
Not very common.
Okay. I'm trying, really what I'm asking here too is like, why haven't we, you know, is it just lack of time and, you know, just haven't got around to it yet? Is that kind of why we, you know? I should know, I should know this. I'm the person that should know this. But I'm just curious if there's, I guess what I'm really asking is, is there a negative impact? Any potential negative impact of having this plan, right?
There isn't a negative impact to having this plan. And anything that goes into the plan, anything that becomes a mitigation strategy or identified as a vulnerability doesn't hold the town liable to do anything with the plan.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be an advantageous opportunity for the town to identify what the issues are. And then, again, once it's adopted by resolution and it's in compliance for five years, you have that five-year period to pursue funding to, and typically there's a match. So there's a 75-25 match. So the federal money will be 75%. The town side would be 25%. You can also work that out where it might not necessarily have to be a hard match. It could be a soft match with personnel and staff time. I'm only assuming, but the reason the town doesn't have a plan in place right now or hasn't had a plan is probably capacity. So a hazard mitigation plan also has a hard, soft, not a hard match, it has a, has a community match as well. Typically, most communities, and I believe this is the case for Free Town, it's a soft match. So the town is dedicating personnel time through Victoria and through our committee to help develop this plan. The benefit of having the plan also, in addition to the federal funding, is that we're also creating some GIS data sets the town has never had before. So you'll be able to take, you'll get all that information and all that data when I go away and the plan's approved and adopted. And you'll be able to apply that across other different types of planning projects throughout the community. You'll be able to expand on that as well.
That's great. Yeah, like, you know, if people shouldn't expect their, you know, if they're in the flood zone that their flood insurance is going to go up now, you know, based on this. I just want to make sure people don't, you know.
No, there are no negative impacts. There's only positive impacts. And if you can, if you can get a plan in place and get it adopted, it's just an, it's a five-year opportunity for the community. And again, like I mentioned, by bringing in all the other actions and showing that consistency across all of your documents, balancing out MVP versus HMP, it's two different funding mechanisms that, you know, the town wasn't eligible to even consider since 2019. Yes, sir.
Because at the end of your presentation, you mentioned senior housing.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I don't remember that either.
That property is no longer Tom's property?
Yeah, I know. That was the, that was like the, it was like the screw factory?
It was Free Town Screw.
Yeah.
It was taken by the town for non-payment of taxes. A while back, a number of years ago, we had a quasi-agreement with the town of Kushner. They were going to give us a piece of property to match up with that. And that's where the town, at that point in time, was talking about putting up senior housing. Ideal spot because they had gas, water, and storage right at the New Benton Line.
Yep.
That property, if I remember correctly, was auctioned off.
Yeah.
It's so long ago.
Yep. So what we'll do is at the, at the end of our process, at our third mitigation meeting, I will put together mitigation actions for consideration. And then the committee will provide that kind of input as well, as far as what is no longer valid. I wasn't part of your MVP process. I was, I'm just sort of reporting on it. But thank you.
All the locations could be included in that other than the Route 18.
Yes, other locations could be included in the HMP. You would have to go back, in order to be eligible for MVP funding, you would have to go back to your MVP summary of findings plan and update that.
That's my question, right? There's a couple of projects in the MVP plan being done in 2019, so it's four years old, that have been done or are no longer viable to be done. So how do we go about updating that plan so that these two plans, you know, marry each other on some level? And my, my second question to that is when we come to funding projects, because I mean, we have a bridge coming up that's going to need some work. Can we piggyback them? Can you pull from both sources? Sometimes, you know, you can stack your grants so that you can get the MVP grant, which would be your match, to your hazard mitigation grant.
So I don't believe you can use, you can certainly piggyback on that. And you could maybe go through MVP to get the feasibility study done and the engineering done. And then you could go to HMP the following year to get implementation done or construction done. I don't believe that you're allowed to use MVP funds towards an HMP match.
Okay. And how do we update the MVPs?
So the MVP is typically on a schedule for that? I don't, who is your, do you know who your point of contact through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is?
I don't know. I think SIRPA did the plan. Does that sound like?
I think SIRPA helped with the MVP plan, but I don't know who the contact.
So it should be similar to an HMP plan. Once your plan is in place and adopted and effective for five years, in order to update your HMP, you just need to, you just in order to update your HMP, you just need to, you just need to, you need to update your plan and like the content of your plan. And then resubmit that to MIMA and resubmit that to FEMA. You don't have to go through this process of having a committee,
That's good.
having public workshops. You just need to let them know where and how it's been updated and that's it. And that's, it's, it's an email. I believe that the process is similar for MVP, but I would check with the, your, your regional coordinator for that to ask what that process is because they might be able to provide you with some technical assistance to get that done too.
Perfect.
And what we'll do is, well, if there are things from the MVP plan that I mentioned that are no longer applicable, like this gentleman mentioned, or have been accomplished, we won't carry those in.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Is it a one-time poll for a project, right? So say you find something that's wrong. And the reason why I'm asking is when the MVP stuff, you had talked about the mill foil on Long Pond, which is a huge concern and they're actively doing some work on it through different avenues. That's not something that's going to be fixed with a one-time, you know, dredging of the pond, right? They're using these machines. I don't want to say dredging, but it seems like it's going to have to be continuously gone after and other things. So if we came to you for money or came to the MVP grant this year to get money, could we go back to it again the following year? And try and secure some more funding again for the same thing?
You could. Um, I think that the, the, the better approach should be to purchase the equipment and like the bigger ticket items through the grant process and then try to build that into your, your daily operating, your standard operating procedures for the community. You may not get funding, you may, may not get repeat funding year after year.
To have someone else do it. So you're saying we would actually buy the equipment to do it to remove it?
Yes.
And then the other part of that is, is it's probably what? 75% of that pond is not in town?
Yeah.
It's in Lakeville. So we would, would we be working, should we work with the town of Lakeville in order to do, to get the best?
I would certainly recommend that.
They like that, right?
They, they do, they do like regional partnerships. Yeah. And it's less, um, burdensome on the, you know, one community when you're, when you're sharing, not only sharing the resources, but sharing the, the match and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, you mentioned Lakeville. Does Lakeville have a mitigation plan in place?
Uh, I believe they do. Um, one of the things that we need to do is take a look at that to see if there are any vulnerabilities or any risks that, that cross municipal boundaries. Typically there are.
So then to your point, Zarkeles, it would be that to make sure that if they have the MVP grant, that they also have that written into their MVP grant would be the best way.
Into their MVP grant and into their HMP grant as well. Yes.
Sorry.
That was my point. I'll drive home.
Any other questions? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to join your meeting today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very informative.
Yes.
If you haven't signed in, there was a sign in sheet over here so they can keep track of who came, please.
Okay. Just giving it a second to let folks head out.
Oh, you're bringing pizza?
Seventeen Nick Drive.
Cause I've been complaining about just bill.
Pull it up on my phone.
It's always open.
There's people on here that I don't see names, so.
I don't think so though.
If I want to make email, not my contact list.
All right. So agenda, excuse me, agenda item three, discussion of vote whether to declare the items in attachment A as surplus and what to do with each, each of them. So, uh, the first item is a police con. Police con Xbox, uh, forty inch by forty feet by eight feet.
Correct.
Fair condition, estimated value $500. And then there are two 22 inch Dell monitors, same value of $50. So recommendations here, you know, for the police con Xbox is either auction or, um, mun- uh, municipality bid. Which is the same, yeah, sorry, it's auction on municipality bid. Muni- I can't say that for some reason. And then recycle the monitors. Are we okay with going forward with those suggestions?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, um, declare the items attachment A surplus and to go for the recommended, uh, actions for those items.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We still on, are we still on Zoom?
Oh yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry. Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Great catch, Jared.
I even wrote it down to do it.
All right. So, uh, agenda item four, discussion and vote on the, on solar on the roof of the police station versus the canopy design.
I apologize for not printing, um, information out on this. Basically, the, um, solar company that we were working on came back to me and said that it wasn't feasible for them to do the canopy like we had looked at and discussed and voted on, that they want to put the whole solar array on the rooftop of the police station. And of course, I, it is, um, it saves more money to the town. But as I've said in the past, there's a, there's been an issue with the police roof. And I have real concerns about putting solar on there right now until I can work a little bit and get further into the, um, to the roof and, and it's just going to cause more of an issue if we put solar array on it. And honestly, I, I think at this point we might want to just hold this until I can do some more homework on it.
That's, I agree a hundred percent, Debbie. I mean, there's literally no pun intended, but there's patchwork on the roof, right? And, um, there's still supposed to be a warranty and there's still hopefully avenues we can do to get that stuff fixed. I don't see a reason. And then we do, the, enough of nothing. When, when they came in and we talked with them about putting those canopies, there was some, the, the stuff on, you know, in the parking lot, we had talked about different avenues that we, reasons why we liked it. And he acted like everything would be completely fine, even with updated models with new year. Now all of a sudden that's changing. So.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe we have to revisit another look at it with someone else or something too. I don't know.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I, I feel like on some level, this was, this was always the plan to go on the roof. And, um, and I said, I didn't want them to go on the roof originally because it's a brand new roof. And then they came back with the canopy and then we split the two. But that being said, the real issue to me is the roof and I need to make sure that roof is, or the facilities that, you know, we're not going to have a year from now, we put all the solar on it and then we have it leaking and we have to take solar off, which usually with these contracts, they'll do it once. But if you have to do it a second time, you pay, you pay to have them removed. You have to pay to put them back. And then I just, I need, I didn't, I feel like, I don't want to rush at this point because I'm still trying to figure out what we're doing with the roof. So, but.
So the motion would be just to kind of put this project on hold for now?
Right. I mean, we're not, they won't move forward with the one with the canopy. So it's sort of dead in the water until we, we get it. But I wanted you to be aware of what was going on with it.
Okay. Do we need to vote for that? Thank you. No, it's kind of.
No.
All right. All right. Well, thanks for the update and that's unfortunate, but I'd much rather hold than just force this through just to get it done and then having our brand new police station.
Right, right now, I think the next step, logical step is get with the company that installed the roof, insurance company, town council, whatever it is, it's a 50 year roof. It's three years in and we have leaks. Not just one leak, multiple leaks. It's, um, it's an eyesore in my, my head going, it's a brand new building. We're having leaking, leaking areas throughout the building. So we need to get that on top, especially now that summer's, oh, winter's here and snowpack and everything else. So we need to get in touch with that company.
Yeah. Great. Chief, you have any input on this?
We can buy a big blue tarp, you know?
I mean, the building commissioner has gone up there. They've done some mitigation. So it's not actively leaking, but what he's done is not a 50 year fix. So I just, it was a short-term fix to get us through. So.
Yep. Okay. Uh, agenda item five is discussion of vote whether to approve snowpall application for winter 2024 from Barry Emerald. Any discussion on this?
No.
All of his paperwork is in.
It is in.
All right. So that'll entertain a motion to approve the snowpall application for the winter 2024 from Barry Emerald.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right. So agenda item six, this is, uh, discussion of vote whether authorized town administrator to approve requests for FMLA, leave of absence and other medical requests.
I put this on here because, you know, we have once in a while, a request for somebody to take a family medical leave act or a leave of absence. Sometimes they're even unpaid. And it's usually personal in nature, right? It's either, there's, there's a reason, a medical reason or some other personal in nature. And it's, I, I, I find it hard pressed to put their name across the, on the.
And also, we're, we're going to improve it.
And that's the thing. At the end of the day, I mean, yeah. And so I just, I thought, oh, maybe if they just let me do these internally so that we don't put in their name all over the, out in public, you know?
I think that's more efficient too. And obviously it's like a quicker turnaround. A lot of things of this nature happen. Sometimes you need it, you know? You know, obviously we end up like retrospectively doing it anyway. So what's the point? And there's no issue like, like from a, there's no kind of like legal issues here with.
No, I mean, most of it's driven by our, our policies, our, either the FMLA itself or the union contract or prior practices. And if there's any question, I obviously would bring it to the board. Um, or at least the personnel chair, you know, which I generally do keep, uh, Selectman Lopes surprised of what's going on anyway. So if there was any kind of a question of like whether we're going to do something, I would bring it before the board. But for the, for me, it's more of a privacy thing with people and, you know?
Totally agree.
I would think for the reasons of like HIPAA laws, right? Like you can only, you're only supposed to say so much or know so much too. So we have to make it, it probably.
But it's like HIPAA laws versus open meeting laws.
Open meeting laws, exactly. So I think this is, yeah, exactly. And that, that's my point is you're walking a, a tightrope of seeing different things. So I think it's actually on, on multiple levels.
Yeah.
A good idea.
Yeah.
Your point, you take it to Selectman Lopes, you talk with him about it, you're making the decision. Yeah, right.
Now, yeah, privacy of our employees and their medical conditions or disabilities are first, the first thing on our minds when these comes to these type of requests and, um, by removing it from this, at this level, um, right? One, it clears up the, the schedule, the agenda, which is not really the, the point, but, but the, the fact is, you know, like Debbie was saying is once you put people's names out there, it's, it's really none of the towns as far as neighbors and people's business. It's really, if it's a, a public, a personal matter, whether FMLA whatnot, it needs to be protected as such. And this again cleans it up and makes it more streamlined. So.
All right. I think we have consensus on this. So with that, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize town administrator to approve requests for FMLA, leave of absence and or other medical requests.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Agenda item seven. Uh, discussion of vote to allow town administrator to sign the contract for industrial communications to install radio equipment on the radio communications tower.
This is just the next step in our big project. Our tower is, um, yeah, radio communication upgrade. I, the both leases I did execute, um, with your permission. So they're in place. Uh, the next step is to have, uh, a company in place to actually install the equipment and this, um, industrial communications, which is also owns one of the towers, but they do the installation of the equipment on the towers. So, uh, that's our next step is to sign that contract. And we, um, we have ordered some of the equipment. We are waiting for the residual opera funding approval so that we can order the last piece of the equipment.
There's no, nothing pending my certification?
No. And I, I actually asked them for an update yesterday, all week, I think Monday, Tuesday, I was sending emails. So today I just got an update that it's in its final approval phase and I should have it by the end of the week. So I'm kind of excited that maybe we're going to get our funding and we can order the remaining equipment and get this project really going.
And I think I've asked this a couple of times, but like, once we get everything approved and going, what kind of, what kind of timeline do you estimate? Do you have any kind of?
I don't, the equipment was on a 14 week, um, back order, but we ordered the, the, the first stuff that needs to go up, we ordered that probably four to six weeks ago already. So I don't know what weather we'll do, but I'm going to say early next year, we should start actually installing. So I would say maybe next April, May, we're going to have actually working communications.
Imagine that.
Yeah. Both those leases were signed. It was a heavy left to get that done.
I'm a nosy dude and I listen to the police scanner all the time and I can't understand anything. So.
So, so it's now Chief Rose showed up to my neighbor's house for an alarm call. And that's the first time that I witnessed it was him trying to call back to the station and could not communicate with them. So.
Do you have a household?
As we're going forward here, uh, the TA has been, uh, nothing but outstanding. She's been taking the role by the horns and
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll be so excited.
Yeah, so am I. This is a great step, bringing this up to a basic standard across all, all communication, the issue, uh, issues we have here in town, police fire, dispatch and everything. So it feels good, feels good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's hope it's ready by then. That's, that's our goal right before then.
All right. So we didn't bomb this yet, right? So I'll entertain a motion to allow the town administrator to sign contracts for industrial communications to install radio equipment on the radio, uh, communication towers.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right. Now I'll kick it over to Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Personnel Board, item agenda eight, acknowledge the resignation of Kobe Imber as signal operator effective 12/3/2023. Usually we say, thank you Kobe, and we do thank him, but Kobe is moving on to the next phase of his career. He is going to the academy. He'll be back hopefully on this agenda in the, in the coming months, um, assigning him as a patrolman. So congrats Kobe and, and, uh, good luck. All right. Item agenda nine, discussion and vote on the following appointments. And there's two appointments, A and B, and they are, A, Maria Russo Emerald to commission of disabilities effective 11/30/2023 through 11/30/2025. And B, James Freights as Sewer Line Extension Committee Planning Board Representative effective 11/30/2023 through 6/30/2024. I think, like I said in the past and I'll keep, continue saying it, uh, our boards and committees will make this town go forward. So adding more capable individuals to these committees is, is a great step. Any questions, concerns, comments? Awesome. Great. I entertain the motion to approve the appointments as this, as said in the, in agenda nine, A and B.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Right. Item agenda 10, a discussion and vote whether to utilize opera funds in the sum of $10,000 to hire a part-time senior clerk for the accounting office.
So again, I, you've heard me talk about the sheer volume of work that the grants and the opera funds created for our office for procurement and whatnot. Well, the residual effect in the accounting office for every grant that we get, um, he has to do quite a few steps to keep up with it. And for all the procurement we're doing, he has steps of the accountant, you know, Matt has steps that he has to do to keep up with it. You know, he has to vet our work. So we have, um, you know, buried him in work, as we're buried with the procurement process and all of what we're doing. So, um, I'm doing this, you know, I said, you know, Matt, I, I want you to be successful here. He's like, I, I really need a little bit of help. I thought the grants would slow down. I thought we were, we were going to get a lot because we had low hanging fruit and we'd go in and get a lot of grants. But we're continuing to get grants every, every week where we have multiple.
Problem.
Yeah, it is, it is. Um, we have multiple departments now applying for grants. It's the police department just got a grant, the fire department's working on grants. Victoria and the open space plan just got a grant, which you'll see me talk about later. So I don't see it slowing down anytime soon. And so I just want to try to get some help for him and opera will pay for that because of course the opera funds have created a lot of extra paperwork as well. So it's just something to, um, get him some part-time help if, if I can.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, we said it before, and for those keeping track at home, it's getting the grant is the easy part. Right? Maintaining the grant and every single piece of it is the hardest part. Cause if you Cause if you miss a deadline, then the town could be on the hook for those, those funds. So we have to make sure we stay on top of that. So adding an additional body, some of you might say, oh, why another person? But in fact, it's, it's necessary because now we are millions of dollars worth of grants in our, in our coffers. But now we have to maintain those millions of dollars worth of, of funds uh, along from start to finish. So adding a body i- is the next logical step. So.
What are we thinking here for like hours?
So I told him, I thought 10 hours a week, he thought that was plenty. Um, and I'm still, I'm still kind of trying to figure out. I may look to get, we're, we're down, we've lost our floater, right? Our floater went to a permanent position within the town hall. So my thought might be to look for a floater that has some aptitude to do some of what he needs. Um, and that way I can utilize this person in multiple facets within the town hall as, you know, which that does seem to work well for us. So I'm, I'm, I don't have any, an eighty, you know, a hundred percent plan of exactly what I'm gonna do yet. But I'm, I'm working on it with him and I was, I'm gonna talk to selectmen Lopes when we, we have job interviews coming up. Um, gonna be um, looking at the talent during those job interviews to see if there's anybody that might have the aptitude to do what I need them to do within the town hall as well.
Awesome.
So I, 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 I don't have like the plan right now, but I'm working on it with.
Space form, that's it.
That's why the floater might work.
Yeah.
Because I do have a, a, a spot for a floater and if, and they have a computer and everything. So we just have to give them the permissions to get into the accounting system and do the work from that desk. Uh, because that is a problem, right? We don't have room to put extra employees.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I'm thinking right now is to hire um, a floater that has aptitude to do some accounting um, stuff. And Matt's willing to work anyway he needs to to make that work too. So.
Perfect. Yeah, this is a no brainer.
Yeah. As the town continues, we've been marching forward in, in a positive way. It's um, you need bodies. Uh, as far as the space, we may have it at town hall, but parking, we do not. So keep thinking about that, folks, when you're hearing this. Um, so any other discussions, concerns? Nope. All right. Well, I entertain the motion to uh, approve utilizing opera funds in the sum of $10,000 to hire a part-time senior clerk for the accounting office.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right. On to me. So uh, agenda item number 11 is to discussion, discussion and vote whether to approve the ball field leases between the town of Freetown and uh, Ponaco Junior Football, Freetown Youth Softball, Freetown League Athletic Association, Freetown League Soccer Club. At this point, we are going to uh, push this one off. We are not ready.
And this does surprise me. That's, that's like, how, I was amazed that you guys.
Yeah. So there's some, you know, some, some leagues came back to us with some input. There's still some other ones. But then, you know, we also talk about, um, you know, we need to be able to give them some time to come back, some other league, some time to come back and review as well as um, you know, take their own votes through their own boards and committees. So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we have it pushed off for now. Um, I want to say we'll have it in December and uh, we'll be able to approve, right?
Some of these uh.
Yeah, December 18th is our next meeting. So the, unfortunately I didn't get these done until last, like finalized to go out till last week, right, right before Thanksgiving. So they haven't had them for any time.
Yeah.
So I would say we'll be ready for the 18th, but if a board contacts me and says they need a couple more weeks, we're gonna accommodate them because these are all dated January 1 leases.
We're getting ahead of that anyways, right?
Yeah.
Like.
That gives them the spring to figure out what they're gonna do with the fields and whatnot.
Yeah. And that, that was kind of the, the thought, right? Was if we can get it to them ahead of time. And then to your point, they're not gonna start utilizing it till the spring, but then they can have their game plan of what they plan on doing in their space. You know, if it's a new space to them, what they might wanna update or change or whatever. So it allows them to, to move forward.
And not to mention, like, a lot of the leagues now are in this winter's um, break, right? A lot of boards take December off. They don't convene till probably the beginning of the year, getting ready for spring. So they're probably not available to look at it or.
Yeah.
So yeah, that makes sense. Getting it out there is what they say and then pushing it forward.
All right. So, so yeah, so um, for now, we're just gonna push that one off.
That one and 12, two or?
Yeah. And then uh, number 12 is also gonna be pushed, which is discussion and vote uh, to authorize the town administrator to sign him. So obviously we'll push that off till.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Deb. Now with town administrator's report.
So again, this, this, you know, I just want to give a shout out to all of our employees that are working really hard behind the scenes to get grants and you know, um, grants are one of those things that not part of our job description on some level and the employees go above and beyond to, and they work hard to get the grants. And it makes a big difference in a small town. We don't have the funds necessarily to do some of these smaller projects. These smaller projects you see around town are being funded by these grants. And, and in a few years, we're gonna have quite a different landscape with our sidewalks and our ADA type stuff that, that we're working on. So you know, Victoria was here earlier, she's with the planning department. And she worked with the open space committee to get the kayak racks down at Hathaway Park. Um, so you'll, you'll see that come into fruition. Um, Chief Rose was here, he applied for a grant for the police department to purchase protective equipment and perform school safety uh, training. That was a pretty sizable grant, it's gonna do a lot for the town and preparing our police or further training our police to work on these things. And then Rebecca Fireh from the council on aging, she applied for a grant uh, to begin a nutrition program at the COA. And when she submitted it, I think she submitted a copy to Senator Roderick. So he uh, forwarded her some additional funds to help with that nutrition program that she's trying to start up uh, for the seniors. So really just a shout out to them to say thank you. Um, we appreciate all the work you're doing um, for the town and it's really valuable.
And that's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely appreciate everyone's help. I think this is one of those things, like, once you start doing it, right? Like, as you said, we obviously, we, you know, we just voted how we need additional manpower to, to facilitate it. But like, once you get good at grants as a town, you know, I think it's, you just get better and better at it. You have more and more of them, right?
Yeah. And there is a strategy, like, like what I, what I was talking about with the MVP, like there is ways to stack grants so that you're getting state money, federal money, all into one project. You ha- you, you have to have some ability to match some of them too. But there is a real strategy that goes, but we, as a town, we have a lot.
Yeah. I think that's definitely something like, you know, in our annual report, or, you know, I, I want to really highlight that as a show how much money we've, you know, we otherwise would not have received if our department heads and, you know, leaders in town didn't go out and, and do the hard work to actually, you know, get this. So I think it's very exciting.
Um, so we, we're, we're on them all the time. And I keep saying, I'm, I'm not applying for any more grants right now. And then it's like, just this one, just this one.
I had a dollar for every time.
I know, I know. Cause like, it's hard to pass up sometimes. But and a lot of the legwork that you see us doing, this has a mitigation plan. We are setting ourselves up for those grants.
Yeah.
The action grants, the MVP was done before I got here, but that's, that was the only thing. But the ADA plan that we did is setting us up to get the ADA grants, the has a mitigation is to get the grants, even the master plan on the.
That's what I was thinking. Like, I heard a lot of overlap today. Cause we had our master plan meeting last night. And it's like a lot of the same concepts, a lot of overlap and, you know, and I feel like those things are, like, all these things coming together. And then that's what it seems to be when you, when you kind of, as, as a gentleman said before, Greg said, like, if you, you know, you know, show a paper trail across multiple different kind of disciplines where you need the same needs, you're, you're much more likely to get the grant. So.
Right. And they will ask you that. They'll ask you, is this, is this called out in your regional plan? Is this called out in your, you know what I mean? And it's hard to say, well, no, nobody thought it was really that important when they did the master plan, but it's really that important. No, you really want to call out. And so when I look at doing the plans, I'm almost looking at it reverse, right? Like, what do we need money for? That's gonna get in that plan, right?
I think that makes sense though, right? Like, there's so many places of need in town, right? There's so many different things we need, but it's, it's, and it's overwhelming, right? But if you kind of can focus in on, on one particular thing that we want to get done and kind of leave all that power towards that, I think you have a high chance of getting a lot of grant money to actually make that a reality. Right? So.
Super excited.
The sewer thing, that's my thing. That's what I want to do, you know?
I actually wrote down here, now you said, schedule the sewer line to bring where we're at in front of the selectmen, because you guys haven't had an update on it. We are actively working on it.
Yeah, very curious.
Yeah.
I'll update you at a future meeting.
All right. So I think, is that, that's everything from you, Deb?
Signing.
All right, great. And so now we just need to sign and then we will adjourn. We have too many signatures today, right?
Doug designed our investigation. Surplus. Snow pile.
I often cross into your line.
You were in elementary school and they taught me coloring more.
It's probably like uh, handwritings. They probably don't require it anymore.
Obviously?
Yep.
Good.
They can't read like documents, you know, like the Declaration of Independence.
I, I agree.
Good. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.